I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward advised by the Nebraska Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium and state their name and address for their clerk's record and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please go to roll.
Welcome back here, Camper, Chris, Miller, Singleton, Smith, Anne.
Here.
The first item this evening is the consideration of approval of draft minutes of October 18, 2016.
Motion.
With a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes. The next item is the consent agenda.
Motion.
Sir.
With a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes. Next item is consideration of the general interconnection agreement bought in between the city of Seward and Seward Wind LLC. Bruce, do you want to take this item?
Sure. This agreement allows Seward Wind LLC of Bluestem Energy, who we've known him by, to connect to the city of Seward's electric system. Matt Robinett's here from Bluestem, if you have any questions. But Department of Aeronautics, Federal Aviation Administration, and Seward County have all approved the location of the wind tower. So we're still waiting on the approval of the K-450 from NPPD, but we expect that pretty soon. They've asked a few questions, but it's been nothing that hasn't been easily answered.
Did you want to say anything?
Sure. Good evening. Glad to be back. So yeah, like Bruce said...
Just state your name and give the record.
Matt Robinett, Bluestem Energy Solutions Project Manager.
Thank you.
Like Bruce mentioned, since the last time I was in front of you folks, we have worked through the local zoning process with Planning Commission and the commissioners with Seward County. We've obtained the zoning resolution with the county. I believe we had the FAA determination last time we were with you, but we've now got the Nebraska Department of Aeronautics. We've done some communication studies. We virtually buttoned up every aspect of the development. We're really waiting on two outstanding activities yet. One of them is an environmental approval. The second one is one that Bruce just mentioned, which would be the K-450, which is just an impact study that NPPD takes care of and it basically just tells us what upgrades we may need to make to the system for protection on their end. And I think there's one outlying issue that we're working through, which isn't an issue. We just don't know the direction. So I would assume that would be buttoned up here in the next couple of weeks and hopefully we'd be moving towards construction in the near future. I would say construction would be Q1 or at least front half at very latest of '17. Once we start construction, you're looking at like a three to four month period in the term of our cooperation. So you guys voted on the business document, the power purchase agreement here four or five months ago. This document here is really just a technical document that outlines the standards that were held to interconnect into your electric system.
Any questions from the council or comments? Yes, sir.
Just refresh my memory, the interconnect, is that with the county or directly to the city?
No, it's directly with the city. So we would, we would interconnect onto a 12.5 feeder line of the city of Seward's just east, just west of the city. And I believe it feeds back to like your 14th Street substation, which then feeds up.
And then what, what direct cost will the city have for that nun for the interconnect?
No, there won't be any. They're going to take care of the metering and any of the breakers or anything like that that may need. So that it's metered, so we know how much energy is coming into the system and that's where we base our purchases on.
Right. And to ensure compliance with the NPPD limitations.
Right, and that's part of the K-450 is that's working with NPPD on, like you said, interconnecting. And then we've looked at this contract and NPPD's also reviewed this with us and so everything looks good. Larry's looked at it, so I think we're fine.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Move for approval.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Before we do that, I know, I saw the county commissioner here. Does anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item before we... Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, please register your votes. Please play the votes. Thank you. Thank you, man.
Thanks.
Okay, next item is consideration of request by Kevin Bond, 334 East Bradford, for construction of off-street parking. And John Hughes, can that John here just kind of brief everybody and then why give an opportunity?
What you have before you is a request for off-street parking and residential for designation. What they're proposing is to go 25 foot wide and 25 foot deep. The office, our department has looked at this and typically what we do, we have an 18, 18 feet long designation for standard parking, 18 by 9. And then that particular area, the right-of-way of the street is 70 foot. So we went up to the middle of the street, measured it in 35 feet. It came back to the, to the curb line, I give it 18.6, basically 18 and a half feet from their property line to the curb for parking stalls. And the reason we did that was we already have sidewalks initiated on the west side of the block. And if you do the approval, I believe it would be necessary for us to reduce the cut-in to the 18.6 and allow for the sidewalk to go through. If you go 25 feet, there's no place for a sidewalk to go because it basically leaves the back of the parking within about five feet of the front stoop.
Go ahead and give the Bonds opportunity, then John Hughes can come back.
Yeah, I'm Nick Cadby, I'll be doing the work there. Address the overall project for the...
Yeah, we just like the opportunity to give...
Yeah, basically what Mr. Hughes just said there, just trying to get approval for it. We already dug into it, wasn't aware that we needed the permission from you guys, but we're just trying to get approval so we can just continue the project and work with Mr. Hughes on whatever we need to do.
Any questions? Yes, Alan?
Are your, can we was changing the parameters?
To...
18?
18 width, yeah, to ask them over to...
Not in width, in depth.
In depth. If you want to bring them up, they're the homeowners here, so that's me, they're a call.
Okay, yeah, we're going to do 25 by 20 off-street parking, basically, to get the vehicles off the street. And we're, for the city, they're maintain and take care of the street. I'm kind of like old school. If I need to work on something or another, I like to get off the street and air link so we don't have to tie up the street, basically.
She's asking if it's okay to go 18 feet instead of 25?
Yes. Be 18, 18.
You can go 18 foot six.
Yeah, 18 six instead of 25 feet.
And then we need the sidewalk. Right.
So yes.
And just to kind of give some background, you might ask why is this coming before the council? We have had this before. If you remember the cattle home on Hillcrest, that was being turned into a bed of breakfast. And I think that the last time this came up that I can remember where they asked to do something similar because they're going to have customers there and they wanted them off the street if possible. So that was the last time this type of request had come before the council. I do think if you do want to approve this, I do think John has some safety recommendations as far as railings, because I believe there is going to be a drop-off of some in three feet or so?
Anything above three feet you're going to have to...
So just to make sure, since this didn't go through the typical, he did do the diggers hotline, but didn't go through the typical permitting for, for this. John hasn't been as involved in this from the beginning as he normally would be and so we're kind of doing this a little bit backwards because I think you dug out most of it, haven't you? Or all of it?
All of it, yes.
Okay. So we're kind of doing this a little bit backwards than what we would typically do it. But, so we have to kind of rearrange the ducks a little bit. But I think, I don't know, was there anything else? Was there any fencing or just railing requirement?
The basic is, is the railing.
The railing, okay, just for our safety. And you might have been doing it anyway. We just want to make sure we get everything discussed in, in public so it's a transparent process. So, is that it then, John?
That would be it.
Okay. So that's kind of how we're doing this. But normally, that's why we encourage the permitting ahead of time just so that we don't run into these things after the fact, especially since you've done most of the work at this point.
Any other questions, did you want to say?
Just one for John. I pulled up the map where this is and it's pretty much going east is cut off by Plumcrick, it looks like, right?
Yes.
So about the sidewalk issue, like, so I live right up by the high school and there's a lot, two houses down from me that's on 15 and my street, North Avenue, that has no sidewalk. And we're a block away from the high school.
Right.
So if sidewalks are a big concern, for years I wondered like, well, why don't they have to have a sidewalk? Because there's no sidewalk there. It ends, it ends at my neighbor and then I see kids walking by every morning, either walking across my neighbor's yard or going on the street, you know? So anyway, just at this property, not, I mean, Seward isn't going to expand that way because it's a floodplain and it's Plumcrick. And so I would just wonder how critical is the sidewalk concern when there's other sidewalks that are like a block away from the school that apparently aren't a concern? Because nobody's been forced to go in there.
If those sidewalks were brought in front of us for some similar action, they would be held accountable for putting sidewalks in as well. We have several side, if, if they was properly, it was coming into the same condition. We do have three different sidewalk areas that we're getting ready. Once around the high school, but particularly around the elementary school. We're getting to initiate, we're going to cover the, the rest of the, it's not fair to everybody. It's not fair to the pedestrians for people to not put in sidewalks. When we do have sidewalk districts that require sidewalks. We build new house, you're required to put in a sidewalk.
So some of these older neighborhoods that for whatever reason there was never a sidewalk put in, we are focusing on the ones around schools, especially the, the lower schools because those kids are going to typically walk more than like a high school kid typically walk.
One of the things that's holding back the sidewalk areas in this particular guy's area, we have quite a rise to get to the front yards. And the last time we did sidewalk districts, we ended up spending a ton of money because we have to cut that rise down because we put a sidewalk in, it has to be accessible. So we have to look at the 112. We cut that chunk of slice out of, out of the, then we have to put retaining boards up there to protect the edges. And quite frankly, we just haven't had it in the budget for the last two years to implement this. It's not that we don't want to, and you're absolutely correct.
Any other questions from the council or comments? This isn't a public hearing, or if anyone from the public wishes to comment or has a question about this?
I'm wondering, how about now, I do have like a 22 foot vehicle or something like that. Vehicle getting long. And I'm sticking a little bit farther over into the edge of the street, basically. Is that...
Typically, these types, those types of issues would be complaint-driven. I mean, if an officer happened to drive by and saw a concern. But most of, most of the, like, of those types of issues would be if a neighbor called it in or somebody called it in. So I don't know how well you get along with your neighbors. But, but that would, it would technically, if it's overhanging, then it's technically an issue. And so, yes, John?
Now, looking at these pictures, you're not going to have to cut that tree down to put sidewalk in, are you?
No.
Okay, I'm just looking at that. I hate to see a nice, fully grown tree have to be cut down for the sidewalk.
Look, could you just state your name again for the record?
Kevin Bond.
And we didn't know we have your address, but could you just state your...
1332 North 8th Street, Seward.
Thank you.
And John, that, truly that tree won't be interrupted with the sidewalk?
No. We have to cut right up to it and that, that, it's overcut right now.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, you have before you is this, is this request. So either if you wanted to make a motion to approve the request, you could. But that's, again, that's up to council if you don't. It's up to you. But that's the, that's the motion before you.
I'll move approval, 18.6 feet with the, with the...
Safety?
Safety rail.
Okay. We have a motion, is that your second, John?
Yeah.
We have a motion, second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next item is consideration of amendment number one, the agreement with Shimmer Associates for Waverly Road, Highway 15 to Carroll K Boulevard. And John, did you want to take this?
I, I'll say a couple of things real quick here. So this is that carryover rider from the last meeting. And there was discussion about why we couldn't use the north side after we'd bought that land. And we did research on it and we did find that at the March 1st meeting, council meeting, when Doug was here and we were talking about hiring Shimmer Associates, Doug Hawley, Shimmer Associates to do the street work as well as the trail work. They were already doing the trail. And there was a lot of discussion then at that time about it. We, we got it from that meeting, if you want to watch it, to re, just to refresh your memory. If not, you know, Larry Legg is here from NDOR and he can discuss a little bit about why we had to move that also. So it's kind of up to you. I think the two kind of go together because that was the discussion when, when Doug was here last time. So it's kind of however you want to handle this.
Well, for, yeah, so we have, if, we do have that recording queued up if the council wants to see it. It's about 15 minutes long. We didn't know how long it means it'll last, so we gave you the option. If you, you, like he said, it's the March 1st meeting. So if you wanted to check on your own, you could also just review it on your own. But in meeting, it talks about moving into the south side. And so for this, we have, again, for six and seven. Six is the consideration of amendment number one to the agreement with Shimmer Associates. And then also seven is consideration of agreement with NDOR for the project, the trail project and authorizing the mayor to execute that, the set agreement. So I guess first, do you want, John, do you want me to talk a little bit about or answer any questions on the Shimmer amendment? Or do you want it to come up then?
I'll let Doug Hawley?
Do you mind? Okay. And then hopefully answer any question on that and then we can go on to the next item. Chris?
I was just going to say, even before he jumped into that, I see John's pulled up the, the map here for us. I mean, I guess the clarification or where the confusion was last time and why we tabled this is this whole moving of the path. I can't see that very well. So I'm guessing, it must be red and green because I'm colorblind. No. But I, I mean, just somebody to explain what, how Waverly Road is going to move and where the path is going to be so that there, everybody understands what we're... Because that's, that's what, the last meeting, that's the whole argument or discussion was around over, wait a minute, what's going on with this path so that we understand before we get into changes to the agreement and what's going on. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Did you want to, can you address that for us?
Yeah, I was going to zoom in here a little bit.
There's a plus sign over on the right.
16.3% right next to it.
So I think I did watch some of the video from last... Okay. I did watch the video from the council meeting from a couple of weeks ago and just have kind of an understanding of some of the questions that were asked about the trail, the setbacks. How far is a setback from the curb, from the proposed curb of Waverly Road? How far is it setback from property lines on the south side of Waverly Road? I thought I'd clarify or at least respond to some questions that may come up regarding that. So what we did here, and I was even here a little bit more. Now we're starting to see it. So what we have here is some of the cemetery, obviously, here on the south. Highway 15 here on the left side of the screen. So the blue lines are the proposed curb lines of the new Waverly Road. The red lines are the, the proposed trail. And then the black dashed lines are the, is the existing right-of-way that's out there.
So the trail going to be in the ditch?
So the, yeah, so Waverly Road will be a, instead of an open ditch section, it'll be an urban section, so curb and gutter with a storm sewer system added with the project. So yes, it will be, we will enclose that ditch and put a, an enclosed storm sewer system.
And the black dash, is that where the current wrought iron fence then?
It'd be very close, yeah. The fence is very close to the right-of-way.
Just to kind of give perspective of what we're doing.
Yep. So, and, and just for information, the blue line, so currently the road out there is between 22 and 24 feet wide. Mill curb and gutter, as you know. The proposed roadway right now is a 40 foot wide, so three lanes. So we have kind of a common left turn lane in the middle. And then we would have the two 12 or 13 foot lanes on each side. So we'd be widening between 16 and 18 feet or nine feet on each side if we stayed on center line of the road. Because of the cemetery and knowing that we, we need to get the trails squeezed in here on the south side, we are proposing a shift of Waverly Road in front of the cemetery by about five feet.
Five feet.
So five feet to the north. So again, that's Shimmer, that here's also, he's...
Sure.
Matt is overseeing the design for Waverly Road and I'm overseeing the design of the trail as well as also very important with the, with the road project. So in front of the cemetery, we are proposing about a five-foot shift north on the center line of the existing, existing road to the new road, which means that we're widening to the south about five feet. And we're widening to the north about...
13 feet.
13 feet. That then still provides in front of the cemetery a separation between the proposed curb and the trail of five feet, which is kind of the minimum standard or minimum guidelines for some trail design.
So when you say moving, moving the Waverly Road, really, you're not so much moving it as you're just making it wider on one end than the other end.
Yeah, the road will encompass...
And I think some of the confusion was like the whole thing's going to be picked up and moved over. It's just that when you widen it, you're going to widen the north side a little more than the, than the south side.
Exactly.
Then you have room, okay.
Yep, in front of the cemetery, that is. And then actually because of that shift north, we will have to do a little bit of work on that northwest quadrant of Highway 15 and Waverly Road to get it shifted back. That would just be travel still on that west leg at this point.
So as we go, and definitely interrupt as, as you have questions. Yes, sir.
Go back to the intersection there. One of, and, yeah, now that I see this, I think it's great that it's, you know, to the south. The crossing there across Highway 15, what kind of markings will there be? Like a button with the flashing where people are here, you know? I was just in Seattle this last week. There was a, it was not an intersection, it was the middle of a block downtown and you could just hit a button and then the, the lights came on and you could just cross and people saw it. Is something like that going to be there?
I think those are considerations. Really, the Department of Roads, their traffic division will really tell us what they want because it is a state highway. And that's the direction that they've given us through the 30% design.
And I think really the bigger issue is going to be speed control down 15 because as this gets developed more to the north, you have more residential. And I assume there'd be a turn lane coming off of Highway 15 at some point, possibly?
Yeah, I'm not necessarily related to Waverly Road.
But assuming the traffic count is what we assume it will be at some point, that would be something down, down the road. But I, I think looking at slowing the speed down as you're coming into Seward especially and maybe not accelerating as quickly, leaving would, would be a little bit more pedestrian friendly than having people going 60 miles an hour, having to stop at a light.
I know that Department of Roads did have a comment about that too and that is something they would be looking at as far as, as the trail plans get finalized, we get a permit to occupy NDOR right-of-way, that would be something that they would examine. They haven't committed to lowering the speed level yet, but it is something that's, it's on their mind.
Is the county on board with the change to the west?
We have not necessarily spoken to the county on the, this west leg yet, this slight widening. I don't know if you have, John, or, or no. Yeah, we, and we've, we've had meetings with the county. We've talked primarily about the east end of the project. We haven't necessarily talked about the little bit of widening on the west end.
So hopefully that kind of helps visually show what was meant by moving Waverly. Is there anything else you want to add?
Yeah, just, so once we get past the cemetery, then we actually, we start curving back and it's a little bit, it's a very gradual curve back to existing center line. And there we actually start shifting the trail a little bit further away from the curb as well. So the more offset, the better. I mean, it just feels more comfortable to have the trail as far away from the street as possible, even though it is curved. So in this area, we start getting to 10 feet from the curb to the trail. And we still have, I think it's five feet between the back of the trail and the property line. So we're not proposing to buy any permanent easement or right-of-way along this south side. I know some of the homes are fairly close. At least one or two are fairly close to the right-of-way with relatively small backyards, but we're not going to buy any additional right-of-way from them. This will all be north of the power of the utility pool.
Who's the next intersection east?
Sure.
That one or...
Isn't that where the houses are?
That would have been it.
This is an old... Yeah, this picture doesn't have the houses in it.
Okay.
Yeah, because there's homes.
You don't, you don't see them right here? Ghost homes.
They're still.
Right, right.
Otherwise, it's a consistent cross-section going east all the way to Carroll K.
Again, I would say also that that road in this area is, is offset equally. It's nine and nine on both sides.
Because it's centering on the section one.
We go back to the west side. This is the homeowner on, on board is removing those trees.
Those trees are, are in the right-of-way.
Yeah, the trees are in the right-of-way. Are they on board? We haven't personally reached out to them yet. There will be a public meeting on the preliminary plans, like we were talking about early next year to invite the public to an open house to see some preliminary plans with the feedback.
Is this the middle school? That's Bader's.
Middle school's right there.
Middle school's right there.
Yeah, okay.
That's there.
So the one house is up there, okay.
Yep, there's a house, there's a machine shop.
One of the things that came up during, one of the reasons why it's 40 foot wide too is, is the fact that it was about four or five months ago. The wakes came to us with proposed layout. It, it was just a concept drawing. Their, their, I think their initial onset for that area was 600 inch block. So what we did is we're, we're basically keeping the entrance to the middle school there. The entrances are there, which will conform to their, their concept drawings as well extending 4th Street and Columbia. So we'll have, we'll get all that in place and just to, yeah, there'd be good access control and quarter mile spaced intersections with good engineering, a good access control. Avoids a lot of turning traffic where you don't necessarily want that to turn.
Sure, sure. I did want to, while we were here, I did want to brief the council on this intersection. So right now at Carroll K, there is a pretty good offset and we're proposing at this point to fix that with this project, knowing that some, someday down the road it will develop to the north. And as of now, we see it as a good opportunity, let's get it fixed now, which means we would, we would need to acquire a piece of right-of-way on that north leg, that northwest quadrant of that, of that intersection.
And this is where it would connect then to the existing trail?
Yeah. The existing trail that goes south. So hopefully that clears up some of the questions from a couple of weeks ago and definitely be, be able to... So hopefully that clears up some of the questions from a couple weeks ago and definitely be, be able to answer any other questions that may have.
Any other questions or comments on, on the, the project? Yeah, just remind you, we have two, um, so just-
Can we go a little bit further to the east if we're gonna be, get a hold of her? That is a section of road that we're looking at.
Yeah, so the amendment-
The amendment.
That's actually on the agenda would be, so originally the project's gonna stop here on East End of Carol K. I think the original contract was assumed we'd go about five hundred feet to transition the paving to Carol K, from the existing to a widened section in discussions with the county. And then maybe a little mess up on our end, because not knowing the city limits go all the way down to the bridge, which is just off the picture here. We omitted that, the stretch, kind of the original contract that we had, that you had approved.
The county doesn't wanna pay for that, Mike? I'm just kidding.
He's excited.
I said county doesn't wanna pay for the difference? I get it. That's fair.
That's a good, strong relationship.
At, at, at the time we presented the original contract, we weren't sure that if the county was going to be on board with it. And so we had several meetings with the county.
Okay.
They do wanna piggyback the project, get a better, better project price on it. And that's the reason for the supplemental agreement.
And, and Mike, I know I put you on the spot, um, but I, I assume things are lining up as far as your, you, what you have in your budget for this next fiscal year and what we're looking at doing, so that things are sort of lining up to be able to work together?
Two thousand and eighteen, is it still?
Yeah, well, I think this, this next fiscal year, the engineering was gonna be part of yours, right? And then the following year would have been the actual construction, was my understanding.
Did I hear this right, that you're gonna, uh, cut the project off like five hundred feet from that intersection?
Originally.
That was the original.
That was the original.
So now, now we're taking it already to the bridge.
That was the difference, I was gonna see if you wanted to make up.
I guess I was under the impression that that's what you guys were gonna talk about today was that Carol K to the bridge, that piece of the project, if you were gonna, everybody was okay with that.
Yeah, and that's what this amendment will take care of.
Okay, that's, yeah.
So if they, if they pass the amendment, then it will be.
From Carol K all the way to the bridge?
Correct. Yes.
But we're also discussing some of the trail issues.
Yeah. Yes, Sid.
Is this an eighty-twenty project?
No.
It's not.
Well, the road is not.
Yeah, the road is not.
The road is not.
The trail is, the road isn't.
So just, 'cause I don't know any better, like when, when we extended Columbia recently, that was an eighty-twenty?
That was eighty-twenty.
And this is what I would think would be a feeder type road. Why is it not an eighty-twenty, especially in the middle school?
That used to be part of what they called, used to call ICE-T funding, enhancement transportation. And what they would do is they would participate in an eighty-twenty deal. Now what they do is you submit the projects to the NDR and they give us a stipend of money each year to use for our streets as, uh, as we need to. And I think we pick up, what is it, a hundred and twenty thousand?
Hundred and twenty-five thousand.
It's, it's not that they didn't qualify, they, that's not how they do it anymore.
Yeah.
So they've changed-
They moved to a different process.
Has changed the whole process and so, yeah, so it's not like it didn't make it.
Larry cutting.
Oh. Get everybody up there.
What, what we're talking about, Larry Lake, Matt Nebraska Department of Roads. What, uh, what you're referring to is what we call the federal fund purchase program. In the past, the way first-class cities got federal aid was you developed a project, and it must be the Columbia project you were talking about. You develop a project, you submit it to Department of Roads, just like you do this trail project, and make sure that it meets all the federal requirements. And then it's led through the Department of Roads and constructed and the, the, it was what they call Surface Transportation Program under the Federal Transportation Bill, which was ICE-T at the time, we've got a couple new ones now. As, as we found out, um, doing federal aid projects is a little bit difficult sometimes, it has some, some specific skills. If you don't do it all the time, you can, you can do a misstep and, and you can have some problems. And it takes sometimes a long time to get a project delivered. In two thousand and thirteen, uh, the proper roads and, and the counties, the first-class cities entered into agreements, um, probably two thousand and twelve, it took effect in two thousand and thirteen, uh, entered into agreements, uh, that the state would buy out the, uh, federal funds that were normally allocated out to the first-class cities and the counties. And we bought it out for a few, um, I think right now we're buying out at ninety percent, because it takes more to develop a federal aid project. You get, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, you said? You get a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, you have to spend it on your roads for more than non-routine maintenance. But you don't have to mess with federal, um, rules, you don't have to mess with federal red tape, you don't have to mess with me. Not that it's, it's downstairs, it's just, um, you get to spend it the way you want. That's more of what we felt was, uh, in the interest of the, the first-class cities. And then the second thing was, you had to save that money up. Um, you know, typical project, in a city project, it costs a million dollars. So you'd have to wait for ten years to get that money built up before you could do it. Now, you can, if you choose to, you can, you can pass a bond and use this, uh, federal fund purchase program to pay off the bond. Those are the advantages of that. Now, kinda getting off track, but, uh, that's the, the, the summary of that. I'll sit back down and finish.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Any other, any other questions?
So the first, uh, the first item here is actually the amendment for the-
The road.
Going all the way to the bridge.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so item six is just the road, item seven, um, and eight are going to be the, the trail. So, so so let's just take this in pieces. So for the first item six, this is the amendment number one to the agreement with Shemmer Associates. Are there any other questions or comments on that? And then I think, is that just a motion?
Well, I, I have a question. So with this amendment, is the section of Waverly, Waverly Road gonna be the same width or is this the part we were talking about tapering back down?
Yeah, this, and I don't know if all those details are worked out quite yet, it needs to be Carol K, but it will be a different section. It'll be more of a rural section, since that's the latest.
That is the indication, is that we wanna try and match what's gonna happen on the east side of Hung Creek Bridge with the county and what they're gonna do.
And the bridge is narrower than the road, so we gotta taper down.
The bridge is actually dictating the width of the, of the. And we did look into the possibility of doing this, then having to have the bridge expand due to federal regulations. And, and at this point in time, that's not gonna happen. The bridge will dictate it. Uh, the county's gonna be doing some, uh, uh, traffic counts so we can get a firm count on, on what's coming in. Cog on the first decision.
I move approval for consideration of the amendment.
So we have a motion to approve amendment number one to the agreement with Shemmer Associates for Waverly Road, Highway fifteen to Carol K Boulevard. Is there a second?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes. And now we get to item number seven, and this, and eight as well. Um, seven is consideration of an agreement with, with NDR, um, for the Seward Trail Project and authorization for the mayor to execute said agreement. Item A, that would be the actual resolution, which would approve, um, what I just stated. So we can do that and then we can go to number eight as well. Are there any questions about the resolution in number seven, A?
So the first one's just a motion.
Now, the first, the both of these are resolutions. Did you wanna add anything, Bruce?
Well, I'm just gonna, just give the little background that we put in here is this is, basically this is the agreement to cross the state highways or go underneath Highway fifteen on the south for the new project and Highway thirty-four on the east side to go underneath, as well as the at-grade crossing on the north side of fifteen. It's basically the same type of agreement we have on the old trail where it goes underneath thirty-four. And the big caveat of this is if the state comes in and does something to Highway fifteen or thirty-four and it causes a problem with our trail, we gotta fix the trail. And that's the same agreement we have on thirty-four east. So they're not doing anything different, but it's just, that's the agreement we have to have with them in order for us to proceed with the trail.
Larry, it is.
Okay. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty-sixteen dash twenty-two. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So move.
Seeing, we have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. And then eight, A, eight is the consideration of LPA supplemental agreement number one, the State of Nebraska Department of Roads, designating for the trail project. Uh, and again, this is also a, a resolution. Bruce, did you wanna add anything?
Yeah, so this agreement with the state now, still with the trail, but it turns over the responsible charge here of RC duties. This turns it over to the, from the city to the state Department of Roads to the trail project. And this is gonna make it really easier for the trail project to move forward. And I will let Larry talk a little bit more at length about this, about, you know, what they're gonna be in charge of now instead of us having to worry about things. But I think it's a good thing for us, but Larry, why don't you say a few words if you would, please?
And Larry Lake, I'm the local projects engineer from the Nebraska Department of Roads. This is what we call the, the RC agreement. And if you, if, uh, I can, I'll give you a little history. I mentioned the federal fund purchase program. The federal fund purchase program actually has kind of changed how we're doing business into the, the future. Less federally is going out to first-class cities and counties. And so you even have less of a chance if you haven't experienced and become good at doing a federally aid project. And, and like I said, uh, as, as we've experienced even on this project, the, their, a misstep can cost you, uh, in time, it can cost you money. In fact, it can, uh, in the right of way process, it can even make a, a project totally ineligible to the federal funds. So what we do now is, uh, you've got a, a trained RC, but, you know, he does federally aid on this project, not a whole lot of others. Because you don't have any other real federally aid projects going forward, except, uh, Carol K, I guess. But, uh, which is another matter. So, um, what we're, what we're doing is, uh, as a federal fund purchase program rolled out and we transitioned, the Department of Roads made the decision to assume the responsible charge, uh, responsibilities for, uh, these federally aid projects that are in the counties and the first-class cities, because we still have some trails, we still have some bridges that, that we're doing with federally aid. Now, um, what, what that, uh, responsible charge is, that, that's a requirement for federal funds, that you have to have a person in responsible charge of a project. It's right in the, the, uh, code for the regulation. So, um, we, we did the training, uh, back in two thousand and eight. And I've been trained as a responsible charge. And all my, uh, uh, project coordinators, and I think Judy Boer is the project coordinator for this project, uh, have been through the class. They also have multiple federally aid projects, um, that they have delivered and turned in successfully. That's the history. Transition, as we went into the federal fund purchase program, um, we decided in two thousand and thirteen to start transitioning into assuming responsible charge, duties for these projects. They, uh, first it was voluntary, that, you know, as your project, um, hit a certain phase, uh, we would ask if you would like to have the Department of Roads take over the responsibilities. Most of the people said yes, because frankly, they were sick of, of having to mess with it. What we were doing, we were basically saying, here, you need to do this, we would send it out, you would get a resolution. Uh, the, the RC would, would do that, then it would come back, and we would check it, and then we would process it through. We were handing a lot of duties off and the responsible charge really wasn't acting with, with knowledge with federally process. They were simply acting because we told them to. And that's not a good way to do business. Now, the, uh, the agreement, I don't know if y'all have copies of it or not, what it does, it lays out, uh, gives the Department of Roads the authority to give direction to your, your consulting engineer. Before, we couldn't, I couldn't tell consultant engineer what to do. I could suggest to the RC, you need to tell him to do this, and then the RC had to tell him. Uh, that gives us authority to, uh, give, direct the, um, consultant engineer to design the project. It gives us, uh, uh, the authority to, to push through and get the environmental done. Now, it also gives you certain responsibilities as the governing body, and those are outlined, I think it's section eight. When we do the plan in hand, in fact, I'm a employee, uh, when we do the plan in hand, uh, we're gonna ask you to, and this is addressed to Melvin, but I'm gonna give it to John over here. We're gonna ask you to, uh, review the plan in hand, review the plans, and, uh, approve a resolution approving the plan in hand report. Because that's a scoping document, that tells us at thirty percent design phase where we're going forward with the project. That's one of the responsibilities. I think the next one would be when we hit the ninety percent plan phase, we are gonna ask for a resolution, say that you approved the, basically the final plans and the right of ways. That's outlined in there. So those are just examples of, of, uh, we're taking the responsibility to drive the project through. However, you still have local control. You still decide what the project is gonna look like, as long as it meets the federal regulations and we can, we can do it. Now, I know that may have been a little disjointed, but, uh, hopefully it gave you the idea of what we're, we're asking for in this. Now, are there any questions? Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much for the explanation. If you have, uh, any other questions, I'll stick around for the entire meeting. You know, uh, we wanna do a little bit more outreach, and that's another reason why I was happy to come here, so. If you have questions, you know, one of the things for us is safety, uh, safety funds are elevated. So, like I said, if you'd like talking after. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we still have, we're on item eight, A, and this is the resolution approving the LPA supplemental agreement number one with the State of Nebraska Department of Roads for the trail project authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty-sixteen dash twenty-three. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Uh, next item is number nine, is a consideration of an agreement with Olson Associates for professional services for miscellaneous consulting work assignments.
Bruce?
Yeah, this is an agreement that we've had with Olson since two thousand and eleven, so this will be the third go-around with it. And what we do is we just contract with them, and then when we need something, we give them a call, they'll answer our calls, they'll maybe come over and see us if we wanna talk to them about something, you know, if we need to look at a pump or something, you know, like the treatment plant or something like that, they'll come over and do it. We don't have to come up with a new contract every time we want them to come do something for us. So most of these are like less than five thousand dollars per project worth of work that they'll do. So that's, it just makes things easier so we can get something done in a hurry. So, like, again, this is just a renewal for the third time of the same contract.
Are there any questions or comments about item nine? And if not, I'd entertain a motion. We have a motion and a second to approve an agreement with Olson Associates for professional services for miscellaneous consulting work assignments. Seeing none for a discussion, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item number ten, this is administrative report.
The report's in your packet, goes through some of the things that the crews are doing, things like that. Um, we're gonna have health insurance meetings, that's one of the things we're gonna talk about after this meeting with our, um, personnel committee, audit committee. We're looking at changing our health insurance plans, and so we're doing meetings on Friday, we're gonna have two sets of meetings for the employees. As well as if they can't make a daytime meeting, we're gonna have another meeting on Monday evening, just to make sure everybody has the, an understanding of what we're gonna be doing. And then we're also doing a retirement meeting for employees so they can come and hear more about how the retirement system works or how our pension plan work. Give them an idea if they wanna make changes to their plans or anything like that, we're gonna do that, is that tomorrow? Tomorrow, so, some things that are going on.
Any questions for Bruce, this report? We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes. Next item is, uh, future requests for council agenda items or administrative action. Seeing none. Next we have the announcement of upcoming events. November twenty-sixth, uh, from one to three P M, we have the Gaiman Select Race. Uh, November twenty-sixth, from, uh, five thirty P M, we have the annual Holiday Lighted Parade, uh, as well. Unless anyone else has any other, has any other events that they'd like to announce? Those are all the events we have at the time. Next is a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Please display the votes.